Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now 5:35 PM. We have called the meeting to order. It has been posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the City Commission as everyone is present. At this time, I'll ask for us to please rise as Mayor Potem Rini Perez leads us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we gather here today to serve the community of Harlingen. We ask for your wisdom, guidance, and grace as we make decisions to impact the lives of those who we represent. Grant us the strength to lead with integrity, humility, and fairness, and to seek unity over division. Bless the city and all who call it home. May our actions reflect the values of compassion, justice, and service to others. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Fudge allegiance.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Seven B. I'll make a sentence agenda, just closing streets for HSCSD, but still.
Seven B. Okay.
Item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item three A, mayor's announcements. Mayor, do you have anything to announce?
I don't have any announcements, thank you.
Okay. Item three B, city manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to announce?
Yes, yes, I do. I'd like to let the public know that this Friday, we're going to have a ribbon cutting for Tony Butler Golf Course at 5:00. So the public is invited. Then on Saturday, we're going to have our inaugural tournament, starting at 8:00. All the slots are sold out, but you can still go out and just view the bad players like myself out on the course. The December 4th City Commission meeting will be held at the museum, so please note of that if you want to attend. We're going to have early voting in the chambers. City Hall will be closed on the 28th and 29th of November for the Thanksgiving holidays. And one of our employees received an award at one of the events. I'd like Oscar to just get up and introduce him.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Public Works participated in American Public Works Association Rodeo this weekend at Bass Pro Shop. So I'm going to call Chris Torres up here so he can give you all the good stuff that went on.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Christopher Torres, Public Works Director, for the record. So this is exciting for me, right? But I think it's exciting for the city as well. So Vicente Rodriguez, he is one of our, he's actually our drainage manager. He competed, he competed in the equipment, annual equipment rodeo that the local branch has. The local branch has municipalities from Roma all the way to South Patrick Island, and there is close to 370 members. Well, he got the grand champion last year, and he did it again this year. And so I think this is a great accomplishment. It says a lot from our staff, right? So I, you know, I think this is really good, so.
When is he going to participate next?
Oh, and since he got the grand champion, he gets sponsored to go to the state and compete at the state level in College Station, and this will be the second week of February. So.
Awesome. Congratulations, Vicente.
Awesome.
So let's take a picture with our champion. Will the commission join me?
You're going to bring the same thing from the state, too, right?
How much you can see?
Oscar.
Huh?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm still going to be your car.
Yeah.
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Next, yes.
All right. Good God. Thank you. Thank you.
We're so proud of all of them. They continue to come to the commission meetings with awards after awards, and we appreciate all your hard work and representing Harlingen. All right.
Item C, City Commission Member Announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
I have a couple, real quick. Next week is Thanksgiving, and there's a lot of things we take for granted in life. And most recently, it was brought to mind to me, we had a Veterans Day parade at Marine Military Academy, and we had a young man there that was a 99-year-old D-Day survivor, Army. Rini, he was Army. And still sharp, a little bit frail, but I talked with him for quite a while, and he talked about, you know, how, what an honor it was to be able to defend his country in one of the battles that they'll be talking about 200 years from now. And I think we take for granted people that look at life like that. We get caught up in the pettiness of day-to-day activities. So when you're thankful next week, which you should be for friends and family, just also be thankful for the freedom that guys like that were primary reason why we're all still here today. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
I want to, again, say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, since we're not going to be here next time, and make sure, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, you're in front of your TV, and you're rooting for our Texas Longhorns in the Texas Lone Star Showdown. For any Aggies, you know, I hope it's a good game, right?
So before we
Well said.
Before we pass it on to Mike, I usually don't talk about the election because Ford is the one that does the little plug for that. Just want to remind everyone that we do have runoff elections, and voting is going to start December 2nd, which is a Monday through December 10th, and there will be early voting locations at the locations that Dave mentioned, the Harlingen Convention Center, the Cultural Arts Center, and City Hall. So for folks that generally go to the annex, take note that the annex will not be an early vote location, so make plans to vote early at one of those three locations. And on December 14th will be Election Day for Districts 3, 4, and 5, and District 3 people will have to vote at their polling site, which is the UTRGV. UTRGV?
Clinical.
Clinical Center?
Yes.
Yes. And District 4 is at Bowie Elementary, and District 5 at Stewart Place or the Harlingen Convention Center. And those notices were duly posted by our city secretary in the newspaper. So thank you for that. Moving on. Do you have any?
No.
We're fine. Thank you.
I was just going to mention the election, but you got it, so I'm good.
Okay. And pray for me when we're watching the Cowboys, right, on Thanksgiving? Because
Our Texans did real well this past weekend.
All right. Okay, moving on.
Item four, proclamation presentation of awards. For A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
City Commission. Tonight, we have brought Ms. Bridget with us. She is a lab mix, about a year old, so she's pretty much full grown. She is currently completely vaccinated. She, as part of her adoption, she would be spayed. She loves kids. She loves to play outside. She's very well behaved. She was sitting in the back right now, just sitting there being super quiet. She is looking for her forever home. This should be about her size when she's done growing. The shelter staff is actually working with her and working to get her fully potty trained, and she is well on the way to being housebroken. She'd make a great inside dog for somebody, make a great lapdog. But this is Ms. Bridget. I did want to also mention, anybody who's interested in her or any of the animals at the animal shelter are welcome to go by 1106 Markowski, or they can call 216-5250 and talk to the shelter staff about Bridget or anybody else. We have stuck with our trend now of all the animals that we bring to City Commission have been adopted. Ms. Athena has found her forever home, so we were super excited about that. We had an event at PetSmart, and we had three adoptions. We had an event at Tractor Supply, had two adoptions. So all of those are great, and we will be having a microchip clinic this Saturday from 8 until noon, and we'd like to invite everybody out.
Fantastic. And I was happy to see Ms. Athena adopted, and she was, she had been there for three months, was that right?
She had been there, I believe, since August 5th, August 8th, the beginning of August.
So that was wonderful.
And Bridget has been with us since October, since the beginning of October.
Fantastic. I think you brought a lab and purpose, right, so that I could look at it?
Well, I plead the fifth.
Thank you all, and great work. We did see all of the adoptions at the Tractor Supply and at PetSmart, and so I encourage you to keep, you know, keep doing what you're doing. We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Item four B, Mayor's Business of the Month, Peppes Mexican Restaurant.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Our Mayor's Business of the Month Award has been happening for over a year now, and this month's restaurant and this month's owner need no introduction, but here is a video that we've prepared for you.
Peppes is a Mexican restaurant here in Harlingen, Texas. I've been in these locations since 1994 as a manager. I love it, and it's, you know, it's a good business, but it's a business where you have to be there sometimes 16, 17 hours a day, you know, and dedication, and to make sure everything comes out fine, and service, and the food. Yeah, I got charitas and salsas, I got botanas, I got combination plates, I got appetizers, margaritas, I got beer, wine. I was surprised, and I really appreciated it, and I got recognized, like I say. I just celebrated my 30th anniversary last week, and I had a real good turnout. Now, I'd just like to invite everybody to come see us here and try our food and our service and the prices, you know, I've got good prices, too.
So as you guys heard, it is Peppes' 30th year of operation, and I have to say this before I invite Joe up here. I've been eating the enchiladas at Peppes my entire life, and I don't think I've ever ordered anything else, and they're still the bomb. So Joe?
Well, thank you very much for this honor, and we really appreciate it. And like I say, I've been there too many years. Time to retire in close Peppes.
No, sir.
No, well, like I said, thanks a lot, and I really appreciate it for this honor. Okay? Thank you.
So I'm sure everyone that is in this room has eaten at Peppes. I, a little, just fun fact, I've known Joe since I was probably 13, 14 years old, and my parents knew Joe, my whole family knows Joe. My parents have their own, my mom had, the chicken en vueltos. My dad loves the bistec ranchero. I like the cheese enchiladas and the jalapeno soup. And Peppes is one of those restaurants where you walk in, and it's almost like it takes you back to when you were a kid, because so many of the employees are still there, and I feel like I've grown up with them and learned about their families. And, you know, you walk in, and they address you by name, they know where you want to sit, they know what you want to eat, and that is a testament to you, Joe, because you have found the secret sauce, where it's very difficult. There's some small business owners that are in the room and know how hard it is to retain employees, and you've done it for 30 years, and that is incredible. So whatever it is, bottle it up and sell it to everyone else in the city of Harlingen.
Well, it's been hard, you know, and dedication. I dedicated myself. Now I have my manager, Mike Carrera. He's been with me five years. If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be there, because
Because he's there every day.
He's there every day. He does a real good job, and he takes good care of me, and I love him like a son, you know, and I hope Peppes will be another 15, 20 years, I hope, if I'm alive, you know.
I know, I know it will, right? And, you know, we're praying for you and for your family and for your work family, too, and we hope that, you know, we can celebrate 40 years, 50 years with you.
Like I say, my employees, I got my cook, she's been with me about 38 years.
That's crazy.
Two with me, nine years with Antonio, and figure out, and then my waiters, I got five waiters, been there 25 years with me.
Wow.
And I got three in the kitchen, been with me 25 years. I had two dishwasher, 23 years, you know, and the one had to retire because he had cancer, he was an 80-year-old man, you know. Plus, you know, I got a hostess 24 years, busboy 24 years, you know, and it's, you take care of them, and, you know, and I really appreciate that.
It's truly, truly incredible. I don't think that there's any other place in town that has done that. I just, I'm always in awe, and I just love to see the same, you know, the same happy, smiling faces when we walk in there. So thank you so much for all that you do for Harlingen.
Thank you.
We'd love to take a photo with you.
Okay.
Do you want to take a picture?
I was going to take a picture. Thank you, thank you.
Everybody go eat.
So we're selling, celebrating another milestone for another great Harlingen business, which is Pooch's Corner.
Also in District 2.
Yes.
Also in District 2, just
And they have been in operation for 15 years, and they've served not only Harlingen residents, but the pets of Harlingen residents. So here is owner Michelle to share a few words about what her business is.
Good evening, Mayor Sepulveda and members of the commission. We are truly honored to accept this recognition on behalf of Pooch's Corner. Thank you to Commissioner Lopez for her nomination and for acknowledging our contribution to Harlingen. It is truly an honor to stand before you tonight as proud owners of Pooch's Corner. To accept this recognition, we want to begin expressing our deepest gratitude, like I said, to Mr. Commissioner Daniel Lopez. Your acknowledgement, truly, it is truly an honor for us. When you, when you told me that you were going to do this for us, I was truly grateful for that, because you see what we do, not only for our furry, for our furry clients, but also what we do for the community. But this award is not just for us, the owners, but it also goes to our amazing team and our loyal customers, and of course, our furry clients, who inspire us every day to do our very best. It is also a testament to the supportive environment that Harlingen fosters for small businesses like ours to grow and thrive. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. It is an incredible honor, and we are committed to continue to serve our community with the same passion, and we hope that we have 15, 30, 50 more years here in that community. Thank you.
Congratulations to you both. We're very excited to be able to honor you, and we also thank you for your service on the Small Business Advisory Committee. It's businesses like yours that really make, is the heart and soul of our community, so we thank you. Can we can take a photo?
Please, let's do it.
in Rio Grande Valley.
So our next proclamation that goes to the Children's Bereavement Center, our GV, is to create awareness for children's grief, and I will read the proclamation before I invite one of their counselors, Ana de Toro, to come up here, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas grief is a natural and deeply personal response to loss, and children experiencing grief often face unique challenges in processing and coping with their emotions. And whereas Children's Grief Awareness Month and Children's Grief Awareness Day serve to raise community understanding of the profound impact that grief has on children's mental health and emotional well-being. And whereas it is essential to inspire schools, families, and organizations to actively support grieving children by creating environments of understanding, compassion, and encouragement. And whereas providing healing opportunities and accessible resources for children in grief can promote emotional resilience and ensure that no child grieves alone. And whereas recognizing the importance of empathy, the city of Harlingen strives to build a compassionate and supportive community where young individuals navigating loss are embraced, uplifted. And whereas during this month, the city will observe meaningful activities such as candlelight vigils held by the Children's Bereavement Center on November 21st to honor Children's Grief Awareness Day, encourage community members to wear blue as a symbol of solidarity, and promote an awareness campaign that includes workshops, presentations, and social media efforts to educate the public on grief support for children. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nolmar Sepulveda, mayor of the city of Harlingen, do by proclaim the month of November as Children's Grief Awareness Month and November 21st as Children's Grief Awareness Day, and call upon all residents, businesses, and organizations to observe this time and stand in solidarity with grieving children in our community. Ana, if you'd like to come up?
We, in honor of Children's Awareness Month and Children's Awareness Day, we want to thank you for this significant proclamation in recognizing the importance of supporting children who are grieving. By recognizing Children's Awareness Month and Day, you are giving a voice to these young ones and the importance of their healing journey. This proclamation is a message of compassion, resilience, and community. We know that when a community stands together to support grieving children, it builds a foundation of empathy, resilience, that will uplift us all. So thank you again for this beautiful proclamation and recognition. May we continue to stand together in compassion and support for children and their journey of healing.
Thank you so much for being here with us today, and thank you for all the hard work that you and your team do at the Bereavement Center. Would you like to provide the address so people know where in Harlingen that you're located?
Yes. We are located on the Sunshine Strip. I don't know the address off the top of my head.
Sorry.
I've been working there for like six months. I'm not, I'm from Brownsville, Texas, but we do have a location here in Harlingen and another location in McAllen. And then tomorrow, I do want to take an opportunity to mention that we encourage everybody to wear blue. We are hosting a vigil for our families, and it's open to the public, to just have a space to honor the special people that have died, and we're going to be there if anybody is interested.
And what time is that?
It starts at 6:30.
I got the address.
You have the address?
Yes, thank you so much for that.
So you can invite everyone out?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the address is 2302 South 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite 202.
Yes, it's on the second floor.
Second floor.
Fantastic. And we want to encourage everyone, anyone that wants to volunteer, there, I know that you are in need of volunteers at the center as well.
Yes, we're always taking volunteers in, as well.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. We would like to take a picture with the proclamation, with the commission.
Thank you.
Item five, citizen communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the City Commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the City Commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Mayor, we had one citizen sign up, and that would be Mr. Ron Lozano.
Okay, Mr. Lozano.
I guess the title is Tax Levy Bill, and if you don't understand, I guess I just better call it trust. Earlier this week, in front of a sizable gathering, Minerva Simpson arose to announce the correct date of the president-elect's arrival in the valley. At a similar gathering on October 21st, Mesmar spoke about pay raises, according to the minutes of the organization. He makes it sound like the budget is sacrosanct, that to tinker with one department might cause collapse of Harlingen. Little can be further from the truth. The new propaganda PR machine has enough in its budget to do a lot of what y'all need to get accomplished. And if you entirely slash that department, no ill effects will occur, perception or otherwise, to our industrious citizenry. Also, you recall when the FINRA matter arose several years ago, he was lapsed in discussing it due to the alleged settlement of the lawsuit. Now, according to Mr. Lial, he's singing a different tune. If you can't be trusted as a fiduciary, you surely show that side, and you've surely shown that side to Harlingenites, just slash a quarter billion expenditure that y'all did this past March. did this past March. And you ratified it in more than one way. And now you sure, in the name that I mentioned, that he has no idea about the appointee. So you can tell that to those that are forcibly annexed during the long twelve and a half year tenure. You've all drank the Kool-Aid and Harlingen is left with the bitter bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano.
That concludes our citizen communication.
Okay, this time we'll close citizen communication and move on.
Okay. Item six, approval of minutes. Item six A, regular meeting of October, October second, twenty twenty-four.
Motion approved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven, consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission, commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll be removing B, since commissioners conflicted on that one. Is there anything else?
And E as well, because that's ACSD as well.
B and E, anything else?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to approve all other than B, E, and I?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Item B, consideration and possible action to approve a request from Sylvia Gamboa, Director of Guidance and Counseling for the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District, to close the following streets, Fair Park Boulevard between North L Street and North J Street, no through traffic to include all entries and exits from Harlingen Performing Arts and Casa de Amistad parking lots for their middle school expo at Casa de Amistad Thursday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, from nine AM to two PM.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries. And for the record, to reflect that Commissioner Betis abstained from the item.
Item E, consideration and possible action to approve a request from Sylvia Gamboa, Director of Guidance and Counseling for Harlingen Consolidated School District to close the following streets, Fair Park Boulevard between North L and J Streets, no through traffic to include all entries and exits from Harlingen Performing Arts and Casa de Amistad parking lots for their elementary expo, Thursday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from nine AM to two PM at Casa de Amistad.
Motion approved.
Taken.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries.
Item I, consideration and possible action approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit one or multiple grant applications to the Texas General Land Office under the Disaster Recovery Reallocation Program and dealing with related matters, Special Projects Department.
So we need to swap out one of the projects on this one. It's listed as C. I believe it's the, it's the Wilson Road lining on the canal right off of Wilson Road. The county and DD five are going to be taking care of that. So Harlingen is going to substitute C for another project that we have on our list to go for grants on.
Right, I think it's listed as three on Exhibit A.
North Main Drain?
Yes, we're gonna take, the county's gonna apply for that, so we're going to apply for the north business crossing.
And does Anna have that information?
Yes. It's a CC DD five project that we're going to apply for on their behalf.
We would just need to, we would just need to replace on Exhibit A, that's the reason why we're taking it out of consent. And it will be the business seventy-seven and UPPR, right?
Correct. So make a motion to approve subject to the change. Unless, Rolando, would you like to speak on it?
Well. Rolando, I'm the general manager for Drainage District number five. First of all, thank you, Mayor Commissioner Gabe, Ana, for allowing us to work with you on this effort. Under the current, this program before you, only cities and counties can apply for funding. So I turned around and asked, Gabe, can we work with you where you can file for a two million dollar grant on our behalf to basically address that major restriction on business seventy-seven and you, the railroad tracks? And twenty nineteen flood, there was a major problem in that area on both sides of the railroad track. So we're proposing to bore five seventy-foot pipes underneath business seventy-seven and the railroad tracks. And so we feel it's important to address that. I'm not an engineer, but I will tell you, in layman's terms, that's a major artery. It doesn't only involve Harlingen, it involves Combs Primera, so all the stormwater. We don't want to impede that movement of stormwater as we send it to Camp Perry. We want it to move as fast as it can and I think by addressing that restriction is gonna go a long way. We appreciate this partnership and we look forward to working, we do not only on this project, but other efforts as well. Thank you.
Has the railroad agreed to this yet?
We're working on that.
Lots of luck.
Well.
Patience and luck.
Yeah, and you know, we're, we've made contact with them and there's a, a process online, so we will get that ball rolling.
Fantastic. Thank you, Rolando, we appreciate your hard work and your support of the City of Harlingen and the partnership that we have with the Drainage District. So thank you and your board for your, for your hard work and meeting the deadlines and all the good stuff that, that are available. Thank you, Ana, for working diligently with them. So it is a team here at the City of Harlingen and we consider the Drainage District to be part of that team, so we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you guys haven't had a chance, you should run over to Rolando's office. He has drone footage of all the canal systems. A bunch of the work you guys are doing is phenomenal, so thank you for helping us on this project in District Two and all the districts that you've been helping with our different projects.
Thank you. We're using technology, not only through the modeling, but also through drone mapping where we're videotaping the condition of the north main drain and on what happens after a major rain, where are the problems that are occurring on the banks? Because then we turn around and go to the federal state agencies and say, let's show, let's show you the video, see for yourself what's going on. So we're, we're using technology. Yeah, thank you for acknowledging that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So motion to approve subject to the changes specified.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. We have no submissions for reports for city manager or staff reports, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll move on to item nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. We have one citizen sign up for public hearing under item nine C.
Okay. So what we'll do is we are going to take up nine C first and then I'll go through the, the others. So nine C is public hearing for a rezoning request from residential, single-family district to residential multifamily district for a property located at four oh two West Taylor Avenue bearing a legal description of Lot seven, Block one oh seven. This is Harlingen Original Townsite subdivision. At this time, we will open the public hearing and we do have one person signed up to speak and that is Mr. Greg Marr.
Dejau.
Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I just wanted to, to, the reason I'm here is just to want to clarify what I believe was a misunderstanding with regards to that property located at five one six South C Street. Unfortunately, the day of the hearing, we were not in town, so we just were not able to attend. But I understand that there was, the request for his honor was denied and it was mostly due to opposition from one of our neighbors to the rear of us and that neighbor you probably know as Lada's Bakery. I, I believe they were the ones that had an issue with it. And I think the issue came about because of a misunderstanding of what we're trying to do there. You know, if the, the, the reason for our request was to rezone from single-family because all that neighborhood is single-family and actually our property is, is actually, there's a, a home there with a duplex in the back. So we had requested if we could just change it to a duplex and this, and, and it was recommended that we go into a multifamily use. And I believe that's what happened with the Ladas. They, they thought that we were going to build more. And obviously, you know, because of the area, it doesn't lend itself for, for any more units. So unfortunately, I don't, I don't believe that that was explained to them. You know, I'm here to clarify that, that all we're, all we are doing with this rezoning, the reason we're doing it is because we're gonna add a, an electrical meter to the duplex. The duplex right now stands as one with one meter and we want to do two, one for the upstairs unit and one for the bottom, bottom or the downstairs unit. And that's all we're trying to do. You know, we don't, we're not building anything and, and I don't know what exactly the issue was with them. I have tried to contact Ms. Terry Lada, or Terry Lada Green, that's, that's, I believe the Ladas' owners, to just make sure that they understand. And, and I'd love to sit down with them and make sure that that is the issue because that's, that really is what, what I believe what was the misunderstanding. Again, that they thought we were building more and, you know, it's gonna cause more, more chaos there in, in the back of them. So that's, I just wanted to make sure that the point was made and I don't know if you, if there's any questions to.
Yeah, just make sure I understand. You're not building anything new.
Not at all.
You're not tearing anything down.
Nothing. As a matter of fact, the only, and I apologize for interrupt, the only thing we're gonna do is improve it by painting it some more, but other than that.
And all you're gonna do is add an electric meter.
That's it. That's all we're requesting the rezoning for.
So nothing changes?
Nothing changes, at all. At all.
You live at that location?
No, sir, it's a rental property.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll be taking the item after the public hearing, so if you want to just hang out for a second, we should be with you, with the actual item for the commission to consider.
Thank you for your consideration. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay. Move, at this time, we'll close the public hearing for this item as there's no one else here to speak for or against. Move on to item nine A, public hearing for an SUP to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite commission in a general retail district for an existing Stripe seven eleven located at thirty-two oh one East Harrison Avenue bearing a legal description of Lot one, El Rancho Mini Mart, number eight fifty-six. Item nine B, public hearing, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for item nine A, having no one here to speak for or against, we will close the public hearing. Moving on to nine B, public hearing for an SUP to allow a storage container in Light Industry District located at one-ten Bass Pro Drive bearing a legal description of Lot one, Block one, in Cameron Crossing subdivision phase four. This time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against, we will close the public hearing. Item nine D, public hearing to amend the previously approved planned development site plan to adjust for duplexes with one unit on each lot with a four-foot side, side setback and the option of a garage or no garage for lots twenty-six through twenty-nine and single-family residential lots with four-foot side setbacks and the option for a garage or no garage for lots twenty-five, thirty, and forty-six, forty-three through sixty-one at the Camelot Retirement Community, number five subdivision, located on Guinevere Drive and Lancelot Drive, approximately two hundred and thirty-five feet east of Camelot Drive. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item, having no one here to speak for or against, or having signed up, we will close the public hearing. Item nine E, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of twelve-point forty-five acre tract of land out of Block sixty-eight, Palm Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of FM one oh six, approximately one thousand two hundred ninety-five feet east of FM five oh nine. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item, having no one here to speak for or against, or anyone signed up, we will close the public hearing. Item nine F, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of a two-point-two-seventy-three acre tract of land out of the extreme northwest corner of Block one-seventy-six, Adams Gardens subdivision C located at the southeast corner of Bass Boulevard and Palace Drive, including all of the existing right-of-way along Bass Boulevard from the intersection with Palace Drive to the intersection with Hick Hill Road. This time, we'll open the public hearing on item nine F, having no one here to speak for or against, or signed up, we will close the public hearing. Nine G, public hearing amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordnances, Chapter one-eleven, zoning article twelve, special use regulation and restrictions to establish Section one-eleven through three-thirty-six car wash establishments by establishing a two-mile radius and distance requirement, ensuring no new car wash businesses be established within a two-mile radius of an existing car wash due to drought conditions. This time, having no one here to speak for or against this item, we will close the public hearing.
Moving on to item ten, action items. City commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item ten A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in a general retail district for an existing Stripe seven eleven located at thirty-two oh one East Harrison Avenue bearing a legal description of Lot one, El Rancho Mini Mart, number eight fifty-six. Applicant Tim Yawoa, Planning and Development.
In ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to Tim Yawoa to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in the general retail GR district for an existing Stripe seven eleven located at thirty-two oh one East Harrison Avenue bearing a legal description of Lot one, El Rancho Mini Mart, eight fifty-six subdivision.
Motion approved.
Second.
Before this vote, I just want to put on the record that I've been opposed to these, I was opposed to the first one because I thought that it would create a precedent and we would have multiple stores applying for these SUPs. And as, I do believe it is okay for the pick-up and go that we've started during COVID and have had much success in different restaurants, but the onsite consumption continues to be, in, in my view, something that's not necessary and I hope that the Planning and Zoning Department will look at that to see if that could be changed. However, I do think that we should all treat all businesses the same and, and given that you've, this commission has already set a precedent, it would be improper to deny a permit for those that come after the initial one. And so I think we're like at twelve, if not more.
The tenth stripes, and it should, that should be it.
I was about to ask, because we've had a few, quite a few. Every meeting.
Every, every single meeting.
They apply for all ten at the same time and, and because of our workload, we asked if we could space them out and they agreed. But this is the last one.
But we also saw the mom and pop ones in District Four.
Yeah, so there could be others in the future.
Right.
Excuse me, if I'm not mistaken, this is state law. This is not something that we can have our way, correct?
No, we, we can require a special use permit and if there is opposition from the surrounding property owners, the city commission could deny the request or you could place additional conditions to please the surrounding property, to compromise with the surrounding property owners. But we never had any opposition from any of the cases from the surrounding property owners.
Correct. Great. So there's a, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a storage container in a light industry district located at one-ten Bass Pro Drive bearing a legal description of Lot one, Block one, Cameron Crossing subdivision phase four. Applicant Lori Beth Browne, Planning and Development.
In ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to Cracker Barrel to allow a storage container in a light industry LI district located at one-hundred-and-ten Bass Pro Drive bearing a legal description of Lot one, Block one, Cameron Crossing subdivision phase four, providing for publication and ordering other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential, single-family district to residential, multifamily district for a property located at four oh two West Taylor Avenue bearing a legal description of Lot seven, Block one oh seven, Harlingen Original Townsite subdivision. Applicant Greg Marr, Planning and Development.
In ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential, single- rezoning from residential single-family R-one district to residential multifamily M-two district for a property located at four oh two West Taylor Avenue bearing a legal description of lot seven, block one oh seven, Harlingen Original Townsite subdivision. Applicant Greg Mar.
So moved.
Second.
Before we, we do that, I did, I did want to ask a few questions. So there's already a duplex there?
Yes, there's a, there's a house facing Taylor and then a duplex building in the back facing the alley. And they, these buildings have been there for, for many, many years. So they're considered a legal non-conforming uses. So that's the house in the front with one, one dwelling unit and then the duplex in the back, one unit in the first floor and a second unit in the, in the second floor. So it's three, three rental units in the property. And he just wants to have separate electric, three separate meters for, for each dwelling unit.
So when you say legal non-conforming, that means they were grandfathered in?
Correct.
And so there's three units, not two?
It's three, one the house in the front and then the duplex in the back.
Okay, okay.
So that's why the request is to, for multifamily zoning and not duplex because it's three, three dwelling units.
And the only way you can get multiple electrical meters is to have multifamily?
No, it definitely needs, needs it. But I'm sure, are there, there's others that are in the community that are the same because of the age?
In the old, old parts of town before zoning, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wanted that clarification. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item D, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to amend the previously approved planned development site plan to adjust for duplexes with one unit on each lot with a four-foot side setback and the option of a garage or no garage for lots twenty-six through twenty-nine and single-family residential lots with four-foot side setback and the option for a garage or no garage for lots twenty-five, thirty, and forty-three through sixty-one, Camelot Retirement Community number five subdivision located on Genevieve Drive and Lancelot Drive, approximately two hundred and thirty-five feet east of Camelot Drive. Applicant Project Management Consulting, planning and development.
In ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, amending the planned development PD site to adjust for duplexes with one unit on each lot with a four-foot side back and the option of a garage of no, or no garage for lots twenty-six to twenty-nine and a single-family lots with four-foot wide setback and the option for a garage or no garage for lots twenty-five, thirty, and forty-three to sixty-one of the Camelot Retirement Community number five subdivision located Guinevere and Lancelot Drives approximately two hundred and thirty-five feet east of Camelot Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item E, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation of a twelve-point forty-five acre track of land out of block sixty-eight, Palm Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of Farm Road one oh six, approximately one thousand two hundred and ninety-five feet east of Farm Road five oh nine. Applicant Whiting Investments, planning and development.
In ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a twelve-point-four-five acre tract of land that a block sixty-eight, Palm Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of FM one oh six, approximately one thousand two hundred and ninety-five feet east of FM five oh nine, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item F, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for the voluntary annexation of a two-point-two-seventy-three acre track of land out of the extreme northwest corner of block one seventy-six, Adams Garden subdivision C located at the southeast corner of Bass Boulevard and Payless Drive, including all of the existing right-of-way along Bass Boulevard from the intersection with Payless Drive to the intersection with Hick Hill Road. Applicant LS Contractor Specialist, planning and development.
In ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a two-point-two-seventy-three acre tract of land out of the extreme northwest corner of block one ninety-six, Adams Garden subdivision C located at the south, southeast corner of Bass Boulevard FM eight hundred and Palis Drive along all of the existing right-of-way along Bass Boulevard FM eight hundred from the intersection with Palis Drive to the intersection with Hick Hill Road, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
What are they doing here? I'm sorry, what are they doing?
It's a Dollar General store.
Dollar General?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, property taxes, sales taxes, yeah, it's going to be good.
And they're really popular.
We had also fixed that road, right? That's what Gabe's telling me, that red, now we got to take?
No, the road is a state highway and it remains owned and maintained by Techstat.
But it'll be inside the state limits?
But the, but the Harlingen PD has, will have jurisdiction. But it remains with the state. They continue to own and maintain it.
Now, the converse, if that been a city, like a county road?
If it was, yes. If it was a county road, when we get a request like this and it's a county road, then we evaluate the condition of the road. Because in that case, we do take over the ownership. But this is perfect, stays with the state and hopefully no tickets for PD.
Do you have any idea like when it's going to be up and like completed?
They want to start construction in, in a month or two.
Really?
Yeah.
Because it's down the street from my lips. So that's, my wife won't make me go all the way to Stuart Place anymore. It's a good thing.
So far.
It gets tighter, sir.
There's a lot of rooftops in that area, so they're all going to be happy to. And it could maybe, maybe DG Market maybe, because now they're building those.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, now they're building DG Market, so there's fruit and vegetables. So hopefully, it will be our first DG Market.
Motion approved.
I just want to mention, Daniel, District Five.
Second.
All right. I'll take my hat to that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item G, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, chapter one eleven, zoning, article twelve, special use regulations and restrictions to establish sections one eleven through three thirty-six car wash establishments by establishing a two-mile radius and distance requirement ensuring no car wash business be established within a two-mile radius of an existing car wash due to drought conditions.
In ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, chapter one eleven, zoning, article twelve, special use regulations and restrictions to establish one, one hundred and eleven, three thirty-six car washed establishments by establishing a two-mile radius and distance requirement ensuring no new car wash businesses be established within a two-mile radius of an existing car wash, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So this is modeled after the Edinburgh ordinance, as, as I presented a month ago. There will still be areas in the city that where it will be allowed subject to commercial zoning, which is on the west side of the, of the city along the express, expressway eighty-three or PS eighty-three. And in FM five oh nine, it will be allowed with commercial zoning and in the industrial areas by the, by the airport. And I have some slides on the drought conditions. So we're at twenty percent capacity with both reservoirs. In October seventeen, it was twenty-point-twenty-seven. On November fifth, it was twenty-point-oh-six. November nineteenth, twenty-point-oh-one. So the reservoir levels are going down slowly but surely. I spoke with the manager for the irrigation district and he told me that the drought situation is dire for agriculture. He's desperate for a storm over there at the lakes. And he said that any water conservation efforts are greatly appreciated.
And then there's also, there was a slide that shows the consumption of water. Do you want to share that?
It's in your, in your pocket, but I don't have a slide for it. I'm sorry.
It had the numbers for blue wave, like eleven million gallons or something. I'm sure them.
So, you know, earlier during lunch, we had a, we had a meeting with all the mayor, all of the mayors here at Stefano's. And I had an opportunity to talk to some of the mayors about the ordinances that they've adopted and how it's impacted their, their community. And one of the mayors said something that I thought was, I hadn't considered. But it was from the City of Alamo. And he mentioned, he was the first one, I think, that, that took the lead on, on, on this. And I think that's why Commissioner Bettis had actually brought it initially. But on top of the water conservation efforts, the issue was also the real estate that the City of Alamo has and, and making sure that if they're going to develop off the expressway, that those are reserved for, you know, businesses that are going to contribute to the community and in a way that is going to improve the quality of life and also visible from the expressway. And what pushed them was that there's no sales tax that you get from the car washes. And so with no sales tax, we know that the businesses that bring in the sales tax help us drive down our tax rate for property taxes when we have more revenue coming in from, from businesses that do collect sales tax. And so the amount of water, I think, that is being used by these are substantial. I think it was eleven million.
Eleven million for the?
That was just the blue wave, right?
That was just the one. And so I know that this has come to the commission a couple of times, but it seems now Harlingen is kind of really late to the game, if you will, because you've got the City of Alamo that, and you have that on a slide, don't you? That's what, that's what you've got here.
Yeah, Brownsville followed suit and then Edinburgh and then recently McAllen.
So in Edinburgh, I'm sorry, Edinburgh, I hadn't, when we first talked about this, McAllen had not, it hadn't gone to the City Commission yet. And so now it has, and it seems that they've taken even, I think theirs is probably the most aggressive
Yes.
of, of all of them.
I think it's time that we do something, this, this, like I said, we're in a major drought. And I know we signed a, a, a new agreement with Mexico. But I don't, from what I've read a little bit about it, it's not exactly what we needed. And I think we really should take this into consideration. I know this is the third time that's come to us here in the commission. And I just think we actually need to act. I mean, you have all these other cities that, you know, like I've just mentioned, Alamo, Edinburgh, Brownsville, McAllen, that have taken the lead. And it, it's kind, honestly, it's kind of frustrating for me that we're just lagging behind. This is something not only that I think that we need for conservation efforts, but also this is something that our community needs. The car washes have been, become a tagline for people. Whenever we just, whenever we announced, you know, the EDC announces a new business or the Chamber announces a new business or something like that, people automatically, oh, is it another car wash? Is another car wash? So I think this is something that we need here in our community. And like, this is not out of the ordinary. This is not anti-business. This is none of that. This is just taking into consideration the reality of the situation that we are in as a city with the water. And when you have one business alone taking eleven million gallons, and that's just blue wave, not to mention all the other ones. Do we have a number for all the, the total amount?
No, we need to reach out to Water Works for new, new, since many have opened recently. We, we need to obtain new numbers from Water Works on their water consumption.
And, and honestly, I cannot, I can say that from, I've blocked, walked during this whole campaign. I've blocked, walked so many houses. And then, and that's one concern that keeps coming, popping up again, over and over again when I talk to some of the residents from my district. And they mentioned, what's up with all the car washes? What's up with all the car washes? And I always tell them like, well, you know, I agree with you. They tell me how they don't like them and what about the water? And I always tell them, it's like, you know what, I brought it up twice. This is the third time that we're bringing it up. I'm hoping that you guys can, you know, give some support on this because this is something that really bothers the community. And I, I feel that we shouldn't be lagging behind on this. This is something we need to take action on.
It's amazing for a community that despises them that you see the freaking lines in all of them every day.
That's true.
I agree.
But you could be the same thing.
I would just ask that we apply the same level of scrutiny to any other high user. Again, I brought this up back the first time this came up. If somebody decided to come in and build a new laundromat, are we going to talk to them about U.C. recycling, all those type things? I, I think it's a great idea. I understand that the, the reservoirs are low. I'm with you in all of it, but it's, it's got to be a one-size-fits-all in my world. So it can't just be car wash, it's got to be everybody. If you use a lot of, use a lot of water, you should be scrutinized the same.
I would, I'd be okay with that.
I think that's an, that's an excellent point. And that is going to require some work on, we are going to rely on your department to be able to bring that to us so that way that can also be considered. Because at the end of the day, and I, and I, and I understand frustration from the community and I, you know, commend Commissioner Bettis for, for, you know, being an advocate for the community. But the reality is, is this isn't about, you know, specific businesses and saying, we have too many of these and that's why we're not going to do it anymore. I think that the real issue here is water conservation. It is a real thing. And even if Mexico were to provide all that they could provide, which we know that that's not realistic at this point. We've seen, you know, we have seen up until this point that they don't have the ability to do so. It's not so much, I guess that's getting into the politics of between Mexico and the U.S. But even if they were and they had the ability to give everything that was owed to the, to the U.S., we would still be in a drought. And so that is something that is impacting the entire region. And I think that we're seeing these changes adopted by our sister cities because of conservation. And that's the, the number, the number one reason behind it. But I echo Commissioner Kinsley's concerns that it cannot be just one, one business. We need to be conserving water and requiring these recycling components in all major consumption businesses. And I think at the end of the day, we, we want that in all businesses, right? It would be nice to have, and maybe that's something that we can look at with EDC potentially in incentivizing businesses to, to go green and to, you know, to be able to do conservative, I'm sorry, conservation measures within their business models. Is there any other questions for?
Yes, I have a question. Gabe, have you reached out to the neighboring cities on a, trying to work with the desalination plant?
No.
Would that ever come to fruition if you start to work on it?
That might be something that we would have to work with Water Works on because they have the rights to CCN for water. So we would have to work with them to try to reach out to see if that's giving something they want to consider. Now, keep in mind that a decel plant was not something that Freeze and Nichols did or mentioned in their capital improvement plan.
So the better route to go is wells. Desalination costs too much. And then you, what you would have to do is, we can't pump the water out of a Royal because that has to do with the International Water Boundary Association. From what I've heard, they can, much like U.P., can take a while to get back to, so, get back to us. So you would have to like literally pump, get the water from the bay, pump it this way, decel, decel it, and it's super expensive.
But that's why you work with the other communities?
I get that.
Not just Harlingen.
But if you look at like Mercedes, Westco, I believe, they've been doing wells. I think that's more cost efficient. It's, a conversation not to be had here. I know we're getting off topic, I apologize. I can see the dirty look you're giving me, so.
So these, these are.
Unfortunately, there, there, you have to keep in mind, and I'll drop it. McAllen is already working on one. And they're further than we are. So please keep that in mind.
Yeah, it's definitely a conversation for, for another, another day. Important information, but not part of this item. Is there any other discussion on this item or questions for Javier?
I just think going to forge, right, like we, if we're going to do it, we need to be doing it uniformly. I know that I've already been talked to that there's another industry that wants to come and put a, an ordinance before us that will limit further development in that industry, right? And so I just caution the commission to be cognizant of the precedent we set, even if we're saying, well, we're not doing it against an industry. We're essentially doing it against an industry, right? And so I think a priority if we pass this, right, is that we take affirmative actions and steps to see what water conservation plans we can do for certain, for all industries, right?
I agree.
So.
I think, I, I think it's clear, and anyone that has been following? I think, I think it's clear, and anyone that has been following the commission meetings and has listened to the discussion before, that there was no appetite for this. And the conservation issue is what is a priority here and not having the information regarding the consumption in the table and all of the great work that you put together, I think, is something that was crucial and needed. And we don't want to be making decisions just based on speculation. And having the information in front of us is important. So thank you for, for doing that and putting in the work.
I think we're also at a great crossroads right now because of the comprehensive plan. We're just gonna be looking at our zoning, right, which is what this is also another issue of, so.
Right. All right. Any other questions? Mike? No. Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Item H, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading, amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 103, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, in general, to establish Section 103-6 Affordable Housing Waiver Program, authorizing the waiver of city building permit fees to promote affordable housing planning and development.
In ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 103, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, in general, to establish 103-6 Affordable Housing Permit Waiver Program, authorizing the waiver of city building permit fees to promote affordable housing, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, staff is gonna ask if we pass on item aye. EDC's not ready yet for that.
All right.
Sorry, just one last question on this, this last, this housing authority, housing authority property. Based on the conversations I've had and I've overseen when we go to Water Works, it's this area that's already having massive issues with their sewage, correct? And therefore, if we develop it, you're looking at overrunning everyone's sewer system.
Yes.
We've had some multiple, multiple meetings on this and with Harlingen Water Works, and they are going to prioritize, so they're just moving things around to prioritize to ensure that that is not an issue. And it'll be working simultaneously while they develop. So we had same concerns, but got everybody to the table. City Stop, Planning, Mr. Calvillo and his team, and to make sure that we are not further burdening the community that are out there in the district for.
The way I understood it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it was gonna take three years. That was the last number I heard. Three years, even if it was a top priority for us to get sewage from this area to the main interceptor, and then from the main interceptor out to the sewage plant. Is that accurate?
No, they're actually, they're not, they're still gonna do that, but they're gonna come up with some solutions that'll tie in to, I think, one of the lift stations that's closer. And they're gonna oversize some of the pipes. They've already got their, their engineers working on it. And what they anticipate is that by the time that entire tract gets developed, they'll be completing a lot of the work already, so.
Now, I know that there's other tracks in this area that also, and they'll cover everyone.
Yes, it's gonna cover. This entire area is developing at the same time.
Correct.
And so the Harlingen Water Works is very proactive that by the time this develop, their projects will be completed.
That's why it's barely coming now, because there was...
And they're having to contribute, each subdivision, they're gonna have to contribute to the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And so we passed on aye, and we already, it was already a vote, right?
Yes.
I don't have a vote yet.
Okay. Yes?
Yeah, that's what I said.
All right. Moving, moving on.
Item J, consideration and possible action to approve a contract between the City of Harlingen and Dr. Shelley Mitchell, DVM, to provide vaccine administration and observation services to the Harlingen Animal Shelter as needed health department.
Is there a motion?
Wait, wait, I have questions. Is this a new veterinarian?
It's an additional veterinarian who's willing to come on and help us with evaluations and vaccinations.
Okay, and where does this person come from?
She owns Arroyo Veterinary Hospital on Business 77.
Right, right.
She's pretty helping us.
Yeah, okay. And then what is the cost?
It will be $2.50 if she's just gonna, $2.50 if she's just gonna vaccinate for rabies. And it'll be $10 if she's gonna do an actual evaluation on the animal. If she's gonna look it over and give us any guidance on any illness that it may have or things of that sort.
Per animal?
Per animal.
Okay, and $2.50, you said rabies. Does that include Parvo and the other virus, the other vaccines? Or just rabies only?
It's just rabies only. The Parvo, the December Parvo vaccine, the Boratella vaccine, our staff is able to do. But the state mandates that a licensed veterinarian administer the rabies vaccination or be in line of sight while it's being done.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And she's the one that does the Spain mutter right now for all the pets?
Yes.
All right. Is there any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Item K, consideration and possible action to adopt the bylaws for the Friends of Harlingen Animal Shelter, Inc., City Attorney.
Mayor, you had asked for us to prepare a copy of a bylaws for the Harlingen Animal Shelter, Inc. This is a, this is a set of preliminary bylaws which would govern the operation of that nonprofit entity. The city commission would vote to approve an initial set of bylaws and after that, appoint an initial board of directors.
And so this was already approved. It was just not...
The articles incorporated or approved and filed, the entity exists. The next step now that is to approve a set of bylaws.
Okay. So is there any questions for Mark? Did you have any, Daniel?
Would you be kind enough to make sure?
Do you have any questions for, for Mark?
No.
Well, because usually you have like, I wanna change this word or that word, or...
Okay, I, I've got a question then. So there's an existing animal shelter advisory committee board?
That's different. There's, there's an animal shelter advisory committee, which is a statutory creation, to make sure the animal shelter operates in compliance with specific state law. This is a nonprofit corporation that can help with funding opportunities and things like that for the shelter. They would have different functions.
So like the library has Friends of the Library. This is similar. And so it came before the commission. It passed at the commission level, but we had not done the bylaws yet, is right? That's correct. And so there's a lot of people in the community that have been wanting to donate to the city, to the city shelter. And so obviously, food and things like that is much easier. They just bring the, and they account for all of that. And then I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, but if they want to do a monetary donation, it goes into the city, then it gets sent, given to Robert, and then it's identified that it was a donation to the shelter. But this will be a way to have it all in one.
And will this be a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
So is there any other questions?
Now, Mark, good job on this.
Is there a motion to approve?
I have a question, if you don't mind. Where is this gonna be located?
It's, it's not... It's an entity.
It's an entity, so there's no physical address. On 31, it refers, it refers, refers to reimbursement. What's, are these board members gonna be reimbursed? What actual expenses?
There is no, there is no compensation.
No, this is a reimbursement, not a compensation.
Please let me finish. If a board member had an expense that was a reimbursable expense as per city policy, there would be a reimbursement procedure. But there is no compensation to be paid, any director or officer of the corporation.
One last thing. It goes from October 1 through, somewhere down the line, I saw something that says September 31st. September has 30 days.
All right, I don't know what you're referring to, but we can make that change if that's the case.
All right. Other than that, Frank, just make a motion approved, subject to legal. Good catch, Frank.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I don't know if we want to pass on this next one unless somebody's ready to make an appointment.
Jody Stryker.
All right. Okay, well, there we go. I'm sorry, go ahead, Melinda.
Okay, so 11, since we...
Yes.
Item 11, board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
Great appointment, and you're always on top of it.
Other than the one I just mentioned, that's all I had. Jody Stryker to the Friends of Harlingen Animal Shelter, Inc.
Put Shannon on the board, as well as reappoint Shannon to the animal shelter. Are we jumping to two, right? No, right? That's what I thought. Okay, yeah. Shannon, you're my pick for the board.
Okay.
She's like, okay. She hates it every time.
And... Welcome to both, right? Right, we're not just there. We're not there yet. And, okay, and I'm going to hold off.
Okay, I'll reappoint Tracy.
We're not reappointing. This is, we're on item...
Oh, this is this. Okay. I thought I heard 11.
So this is just for this new nonprofit. Okay, that's what. All right. What else?
None. Yes, Jessica Garcia.
Jessica. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve those two, three appointments?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then now if we can just have this added to our list. Okay, now moving on.
All right, so we go to item 11, or we're going to item?
Item 11.
Okay. Board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
Julio Geller to the museum advisory board.
I'm gonna be reappointing Shannon Harwood to the animal shelter board.
I do have an additional appointment for the animal shelter advisory board. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to designate the position of the shelter manager. So that way, it's whomever that is moving, moving forward, right? Okay. And that fits that appointment, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that'll be my, to kind of make things easier. All right. Oh, wait, and I do have, for the record, for the utility board of trustees, since now the mayor has an appointment, Wayne Lowery. Go ahead.
Reappoint Tracy Gonzalez to the library advisory board. And I still don't understand, keep Harlingen beautiful.
You're not doing anything there.
Okay, so I cannot reappoint my appointment.
I think we're doing attrition, right?
Right. We agreed, natural attrition.
Right.
Okay.
None. None.
All right. Motion, is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, city commission will not take any action in closed session. Item 12A, consultation with legal counsel regarding reasonably contemplated litigation pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, parentheses 1, parentheses, a city manager.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The time is now 6:59 PM. We'll retire to executive session and be out shortly. Okay, the time is now 7:44 PM. We are out of executive session and now in open session. Ms. Melinda?
Item 13, action on executive session items. The city commission will reconvene in open session and may take any action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. Item 13A, consideration and possible action on item 12A as discussed in executive session.
A motion to acknowledge, report, and proceed to discuss.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that is all we have. We are adjourned. Thank you.